Recording in progress.
Back to work after two weeks.
Call the public hearing to order at six forty seven P M. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Here.
Benedetti.
Here.
Kiaba Watten.
Present.
Hornbeck.
Here.
Perucci. Rodriguez.
Here.
Rizepa.
Here.
Corum present, Mayor Rizepa.
All right, the purpose of the public hearing this evening is for the establishment of a commercial rehabilitation district. I'm reading off the notice here. This would be at thirty three sixty West Jefferson pursuant to Public Act two ten of two thousand and five as amended. From the clerk's notice here, notice is hereby given that the City Council of the City of Trenton will hold a public hearing on Monday, October sixth, twenty twenty five, at six forty five P M. in the council chambers, City Hall, twenty eight hundred, Third Street. The purpose of this hearing will be to entertain views and comments from interested individuals regarding a written request for the establishment of a commercial rehabilitation district pursuant to Public Act two ten of two thousand and five as amended for property located at thirty three sixty West Jefferson Avenue, Trenton, Michigan. Parcel ID fifty four dash zero one five dash zero one dash zero 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 eight dash zero zero zero. Individuals or groups wishing to make oral presentations or submit prepared statements pertaining to the proposal may do so at this public hearing. Interested parties who are unable to attend the public hearing may submit their comments in writing to the city clerk, twenty eight hundred, Third Street, Trenton, Michigan, forty four eight one eight three. People with disabilities needing accommodation for effective participation in this meeting should contact the clerk's office at six seven three four six seven five eighty six hundred, at least three business days in advance, to request assistance. So we'll open up the hearing for the commercial rehabilitation district at thirty three sixty West Jefferson. Did we have any written comments submitted by chance, Madam Clerk?
We did not.
All right. Thank you very much. Any other comments here? Well, not seeing any on the Zoom here then, we'll adjourn the public hearing before the regular meeting. Would you get a motion?
So moved.
Support?
Support.
Okay, moved and supported there for adjournment of the public hearing for the commercial rehabilitation, commercial rehabilitation district at thirty three sixty West Jefferson at six forty nine P M.
Recording in progress.
Yep. And I told him, I said, yeah, I'd support them if they liked it like I do and want to, willing to work, yeah.
You are, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just wanted to make sure.
Yep, yeah.
All right, if we could all please rise for the pledge of allegiance. And at the conclusion of the pledge, if we could also pause for a moment of silence. One of our longtime former council members, Mr. Chato Banjenan, passed away a couple of weeks ago here, so we want to just give the silence for his family.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the meeting to order at seven oh one P M. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Von Kriks.
Here.
Benedetti.
Here.
Kiaba Watten.
Present.
Hornbeck.
Here.
Perucci. Rodriguez.
Here.
Rizepa.
Here.
Corum present, Mayor Rizepa.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk.
Like to make a motion to excuse Councilman Nelson Perucci.
Support.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none is unanimously so ordered. Excuse Councilman Perucci. We'll go to the minute approval of the September fifteenth, twenty twenty five, regular meeting.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none is unanimously so ordered. All right, we've got public comment now regarding items on today's agenda. This portion of public comment will have reserved for items that are on today's agenda, another opportunity for all other public comment later on in the meeting. Does anyone wishing to speak, please begin with their name and address, limit their comment to five minutes, and direct all questions through me. All right. Moving along there. First item we have is under appointments to the Civic Commission here. Got to make sure that this loads. I know this one was for requesting this body's appointment. Stephen Figaro to the Civic Commission was term eleven one twenty twenty eight. If we could get a motion.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll? Thank you for that.
Benedetti.
Yes.
Kiaba Watten.
Yes.
Hornbeck.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Rizepa.
Abstain.
Von Kriks.
Yes.
Motion carries, Mayor Rizepa.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and thank you all for your concurrence. I will defer now to our thirty third District Court Delegate, Councilman Benedetti, for fines, costs, and fees for August twenty twenty five.
Thank you, Mayor. Moved to receiving place on file, the fines, costs, fees for August twenty twenty five submitted by the thirty third District Court showing the City of Trenton receiving eight thousand, two hundred and twenty-three dollars and forty-three cents.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none is unanimously so ordered. Thank you, Councilman.
Sure.
We have a couple of items now that I'm going to defer to you on, Madam Clerk. The first up from Baxford residents, a black party request for October twenty fifth, twenty twenty five.
Thank you. The residents of Baxford Street are requesting permission to hold a black party on Saturday, October twenty fifth, from eight A M. until ten P M. And approve the temporary road blockage of Baxford Street between Strome Avenue and True Wood, and this would be under the direction of the Police Department and Department of Public Services.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none is unanimously so ordered. And next, we have an additional black party request from the residents on Baxford for October thirty first, twenty twenty five, Halloween.
Yes, so the residents on Baxford Street are again asking for permission to close their street during, on Halloween, in their pumpkin lane, and this would be to allow the kids to walk in the street on Halloween from four P M. until nine P M. and approve the road blockage of Baxford Street between Strome Avenue and True Wood. And again, this would be under the direction of the Police Department and the Department of Public Services.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none is unanimously so ordered. And then the last one I'll have you take here is from the Trenton Hockey Association, the annual decal sale.
Thank you. The Trenton Hockey Association is asking for permission to hold their annual decal sale in the City of Trenton on Saturday, October eleventh, between the hours of ten A M. and four P M. And this would be with adult supervision and under the direction of the Police Department.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none is unanimously so ordered.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. All right, the first item we've got here under department heads and officials is from me, asking for this body's concurrence in rescheduling the council meeting on Monday, October twentieth, twenty twenty five, up until Tuesday, October fourteenth, twenty twenty five, still at seven P M.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion there? Just to add to, we will be having presentations from our chiefs to give updates on bond progress on the buildings too, so should be good information for the residents then. So seeing no further discussion, it's unanimously so ordered. Thank you. Next up, we have two items from our city attorney, the first here being the commercial rehabilitation district number three at thirty three sixty West Jefferson L L C.
Thank you, Mayor. Previously, under P A two ten of two thousand and five, the City Council found that it had the authority to establish a commercial rehabilitation district within the City of Trenton. And had the public hearing, has now had a public hearing and where it was approved. It is asked that, and it has already been found, the City Council and by the City Council, that all district requirements have been met as set forth in sections two impairments B and three, Public Act two ten of two thousand and five. So you're now being asked to make this a, a commercial rehabilitation district for the property with the parcel identity of thirty three sixty West Jefferson, parcel ID five four dash oh one five dash oh one dash oh oh eight dash oh oh oh. Nineteen E eight to lots eight to twelve, including vote sub T S R eleven E, all forty one, page sixty nine of the Wayne County records. And this is, already had the public hearing, and it's now being asked and recommended that you approve this and adopt this in the City Council.
I would so move.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion?
Can we also schedule the public hearing for?
Correct, yeah, so as part of the motion to schedule a public hearing for six forty five P M. on Tuesday, October fourteenth, before the next meeting, so just to make sure everyone's okay with that.
Right, we just had the first, first reading and the public hearing.
And that would be for the application.
So, all right, do we have motion and support there?
Mm-hmm.
Any further discussion? Seeing none is unanimously so ordered. Thank you. The second one we've got, I'll keep it with you here, Alan, ordinance number eight twenty, amending chapter ninety eight, cross connection references, changing from Michigan, Michigan Department of Environmental Quality to Eagle.
You have stated what is being requested. This is the second hearing today. This is standard procedure to ensure local laws reflect the current names of state regulatory bodies for funding purposes.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none is unanimously so ordered. Thank you very much. Next, we have our D D A Director, Ms. Angela Lucia Pacino, for Small Business Saturday.
Thank you. So I have a special events application on behalf of the Trenton D D A for our Small Business Saturday. This would be on November twenty ninth, from ten A M. to five P M. The purpose is to promote shopping during the National Small Business Saturday, which is always the last Saturday of November, right after Thanksgiving. This would be mostly located, obviously, kind of throughout West Jefferson to do shopping. We would have a sip and stroll. We are asking, though, for the closure of Saint Joseph, both the east side and west side, just from West Jefferson to the alleyways, as well as the closure of the Elm Street Municipal Parking Lot. This will be for the vendors, food trucks, and kid activities. We're expecting about over three thousand people to attend, and we'll just have like really great giveaways, use the Trenton Social District. We don't intend to sell any alcohol. It will just be the licensed businesses that are already part of the program. So I'm just asking for the approval of the special events application.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none is unanimously so ordered. Next, Chief Anderson from the Fire Department here, the acceptance of the A F G grant for water rescue equipment and training.
Good evening, Mayor Council. Trenton Fire Department submitted and was awarded a twenty twenty four A F G grant through FEMA. This grant provides matching funds for Trenton Fire to obtain equipment and training for certification and water rescue. Equipment provided will cover both surface water rescue as well as ice rescue. Funds are also covering personnel training hours and all instructor fees needed to provide the training resulting in certification and ice and surface water rescue. The federal funds provided are in the amount of fifty two thousand, six hundred and two dollars and ninety-nine cents, with Trenton's five percent match to be equal or greater than twenty six hundred, thirty dollars and sixteen cents. Funds for the match are available within the fire department's firefighting supplies budget, one oh one three three six seven five four zero zero zero. Respectfully requesting this honorable body to approve acceptance of this grant for fifty two thousand, six hundred and two dollars and ninety-nine cents.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none is unanimously so ordered. Thank you very much, Chief.
Thank you.
All right, now our Parks and Recreation Director, Mr. Beaker, we have the Silken Park Ennis Field improvements.
Thank you, Mayor. I respectfully request approval to proceed with the Ennis Field Drainage Project. Over the past six months, Ennis Field and Silken Park have undergone several significant improvements. However, flooding of the baseball field continues to be a major issue. Previous, previous efforts to correct the problem by adding additional dirt and adjusting the slope of the playing surface were unsuccessful. At present, the field has no proper outlet for drainage unless the water is piped directly into nearby catch basins. Campbell Brothers has surveyed the site and submitted a proposal, proposal to install and complete a subsurface drainage system that will direct the storm water from the field to the catch basins, as outlined in the attached plan. This project will eliminate the flooding issue and ensure the proper baseball field remains playable throughout the spring season, even during the rainiest periods. With, with council's approval, Campbell Brothers is prepared to complete the project before winter, with the total cost of twenty thousand, two hundred and forty-eight dollars.
So moved. Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Councilwoman Rodriguez?
How long does the project work plan?
How long does it, how long will it take them to complete?
Yes, how long?
I anticipated to complete by the end of the fall, I believe.
Okay.
So, or the end of, probably, they will probably work through a little bit of the winter, but everything will be completed before spring and the rainy season, so.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yep.
Oh, Councilwoman Hornbeck?
Hi. My son just played a game there, actually, last Friday, and the surface of the field is also like, I guess they described it as cement. Will that be, will they have to like tear the field up to do this project, so it will be like?
Correct.
Okay, because I know they put a little bit more dirt on top, but that didn't, obviously didn't solve the problem.
Yep.
So the whole thing will be?
There will be, there'll be more dirt added on top after it's all done to get a top coating done, so.
But will it be like re?
It'll be ground up and mixed.
Okay, yeah, that's what I guess is the word I'm looking for.
Don't want to go too deep into the mix, because then you're going to start to get down into the more of a stone mix, but yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Tim, are you guys, what exactly are you going to do there? Are you going to put in like another catch basin that's going to tie into the main line, or what's?
There would be a drainage.
Like weep tile? What exactly are we?
There'd be a weeping tile that goes all the way around the infield, which will catch the drainage from the outfield. There'll also be fingers that go into the infield, and then there'll be a line that proceeds from there across into the existing catch basin.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yep.
All right. Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered.
Thank you.
All right. Do we have any late items tonight, Madam Clerk?
We do not.
All right. I will kick it over to our Mayor Protem, Councilman Benedetti, for authorized dispersments and reports.
Thank you, Mayor. Moved to approve the authorized dispersment, dated October 6th, 2025, amount of $5,931,845.51. Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered.
Thank you. Removed, moved to receiving place on file, the following reports, City Beautiful Commission Minutes, September 3rd, 2025, Culture Commission Minutes, August 20th, 2025, Library Governing Board Minutes, July 9th, 2025, Recreation Commission Minutes, April 15th, 2025, May 20th, 2025, Traffic Safety Commission Minutes, August 6th, 2025, and September 3rd, 2025, and the Fire Department run through reports for July and August of 2025. Support.
All right. Moved and supported. Any further discussion there? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered.
And I got one for you, Mayor. Moved to hold a closed study session tonight following the council meeting, October 6th, immediately following, for the purpose of discussion, collective bargaining. Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll on that one?
Cabo Watten?
Yes.
Hornbeck?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Rizeppa?
Yes.
Von Kruks?
Yes.
Benedetti?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mayor Rizeppa.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Councilman.
Sure.
All right. We'll go to other council business now. I don't have anything further tonight, but we'll get started with Councilman Cabo Watten.
No, you know, Mayor, I'm going to go with your cue. I don't have anything else tonight either.
All right. Councilwoman Rodriguez?
Thank you, Mayor. I do apologize. I was not able to attend the International Wildlife Refuge fundraiser. I heard it was fantastic event, and I hope that everyone had a wonderful time, and I'd like to wish my grandson, Roman, a happy belated birthday. He's 28 years old, and that's all I have for you.
Congratulations. Awesome. Councilwoman Von Kruks?
Just a few quick things. One thing for Kevin Sargent. I know you had gotten the grass cut over on Riverside next to the pier condos over there. Well, it's kind of gotten terrible again, and one of the residents tried to go out and cut it with an edger and tried to get rid of some of the grass, but couldn't mow it. So could we maybe take a look at that again and see what we can do? I know you guys took good care of it last time. Next thing, I feel like the grass police tonight, but as you're coming down Fort Street, going towards Van Horn, on the right side at the Marion, just before the Marion egress, like you go into the subdivision there, Marion and Fort, there's a house there with way, way overgrown grass and foliage and weeds and trees that are laying in the road. It's been like that all summer. It's been that way for a long time. So when you come off there, you don't want, you hit your car on it, so you're closer to the road. I'm afraid maybe somebody's going to try to maybe get clipped there trying to avoid that grassy area, but it's way into the road. Is, can we take a look at that and see if we can't get the homeowner or somebody to cut that down? It's really bad.
I'll make sure that's referred to the Building Department.
Oh, okay, because last time, you know, Kevin had gotten his guys on it, so whoever needs to look at it just needs to look at it, because it's really, it's really bad. Is, I can't think that we've left it like that. I mean, it's, the homeowners left it like that, I should say. But anyway, that. And also, Scott, I don't want to put you on the spot, but I've been asking for a couple of years now about Grange and King. Do we have any updates on that? A turn signal, a light there? You know, I've always said for years, a couple of years now, that it's just a very dangerous corner. It still is.
So the county did do a traffic study there earlier this year.
Yes.
Nothing, at this point, nothing has, the conditions haven't changed. We're going to continue to monitor that situation over there and watch it, but at this point, it did not meet the conditions, from what I'm being told with, yep, from what I'm being told with our traffic engineers.
Well, that's really a shame. It's a shame to hear that, because it is a hazard. It's a terrible hazard. Even our own, I've talked to our own police officers that said there's way too many accidents there.
No, we're watching it.
Yeah, and you're taking your life in your hands when you go to turn there to get into our subdivision. You know, and there's all that new marijuana business there and cannabis, and there's different businesses there that are, they're busier now.
I can tell you.
And it's even worse.
We're, we've got, we're keeping an eye on it. We've got several throughout the county, and we're keeping an eye on them, but at this point, we're, there's nothing at this point that warrants.
Can be done, really?
Left turn lanes and then, and things like that. And then once it does, or if it does, let me say that, if it does at some point, then you're talking about design. You're talking about funding and.
You're talking about a green arrow for safety, is what I'm talking about.
It's, it's not that, it's not as simple. I'm happy to, I'm happy to sit, and I'm happy to sit down and talk to you about it afterwards.
Yeah, yeah, I get it. Well, I'm disappointed to hear that, because I do think it's hazardous, and maybe, I don't know, who we can contact from the county that we might even bend their ear a little bit further. But it's not only for our residents, but it's for everybody's safety, and it's a bad corner. It's really a bad corner. So that's it. That's all I have tonight. I just wanted to address that while you were here. So, thank you. That's it, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Benedetti?
Well, thank you, Mayor. First off, I want to talk a little bit about, we had a moment of silence for Chato Banjin, and I know some people don't even know who he is, but a 90-some-year-old resident who lived here forever, served on his council, and I can tell you that being on the street with him, he was a wealth of knowledge on how we did it and why we did things way before I ever came around here. And he still would get involved. He would talk about stuff, and I can tell you, if we did things here that he agreed with or didn't agree with, oh, I'd get a text message or a phone call. But it's, it's the type of guy you want in your neighborhood. He looked out for everybody, got involved in everything we did. So I just, you know, want to send the condolences out to his family again. I know we did a moment of silence, but very unexpected, and, you know, he, he was a great guy to know, and I want people to know that. Second thing is, Mr. Beaker, was that the ice rink Saturday? Guys doing a great job. That place looks spotless. Granted, it was nine o'clock in the morning, but still, I think it looks a lot better than it has in the past. So, great job with that ice rink. My grandson's skating there at the Learn to Skate Program, which if you're ever bored and want to see a bunch of weird things, watch three-year-olds skate at 8:30 in the morning. It was entertaining. But that's it, Mayor. I have nothing else. Oh, you know what? I'm sorry. I do. I know he's probably going to get mad at me, but can we give a little bit of update, Mr. Creech? I know we've talked about it, but just where we're headed with sidewalks and street repairs, I know we've had some hiccups this year, but maybe the residents just need to hear a little bit so they understand what we're up against.
Sure. The, the new contractor that we have coming in, we have probably one more street that we're going to take care of and jump into, and the, but the rest, the primary focus of his is going to be sidewalks. And between now, between this fall and next pouring season, come springtime, we're, we're going to address upwards of 900 addresses that we have noted that have some type of issue that needs to be addressed. Unlike most communities, as everyone here is aware, but a lot of the taxpayers aren't, sidewalks are handled through taxes. In most communities, in fact, every community that I know of, city goes through, they inspect it, they send you a letter, and they send you a bill. We don't do it like that. We've had 100, all of our sidewalks have been inspected twice over the last two years. We're required to do it every five years. That's why we have such a large number of sidewalks that need, need attention. But our hope is to get, you know, a quarter or a third of the way through those addresses, be aggressive about it like we were last year, where we, I think we spent $175,000 on sidewalks last year. And should be noted, too, like with street repairs and everything, in the last two years, even though our Act 51, which pays for street repairs and sidewalks, we only generate about 1.3 million in revenue. We've put over $3 million into streets and into sidewalks. So there's a lot of it going on. It's, it never happens at the pace everybody wants, but it is, it is happening. And we will start this latest push with the worst of the issues, and then it'll be a neighborhood-by-neighborhood issue that we'll address.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Sir.
Anything else, Councilman?
No, I'm good. Thanks, Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Councilwoman Hornbeck?
Just a couple of things. Hopefully, everyone has had a chance to enjoy the murals downtown, all the new ones and the old ones. I know the mural people are doing a free mural tour on October 11th, if you're interested in that. I think the information is on Facebook for sure. I'm not sure if we have it on the city's website. And there will be one more mural coming later this month that will be started. One of the artists, Kevin Berdick, who did the mural on the side of the liquor store, I believe, right? Yep. It will be doing a mural on the side of our theater, the Home Up Dipak. It is beautiful. If you look in the notes of the council, you can see the final design. It's kind of whimsical and playful and fun. I think it's really going to turn out nice. It should be starting in about a week or two. And also, it's homecoming week in Trenton, and if anyone doesn't have children at school doing Spirit Day, congratulations. Every day this week, three schools. There'll be a lot of activities going on, float building. There is a parade on West Road, right in front of the high school, on Friday at 6:00 o'clock. I think we approved that road closure last time. And then the game and the dance on Saturday, so just please be aware that there will be a lot of extra traffic around the high school this weekend. That's all I've got.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman. Go to our other elected officials now. Madam Clerk, do you have anything else?
Just, just a reminder that the next council meeting will be on Tuesday, October 14th, with a public hearing at 6:45, and that is to entertain views and comments from interested individuals regarding the Commercial Rehabilitation Exemption Application for 3360 West Jefferson, and our regular meeting will be at 7:00 p.m.
Thank you very much. Madam Assessor, do you have anything?
All set.
All right. Thank you. Treasurer's office? All right, nothing there. Any of our department heads have anything tonight? All right. Not seeing any. We'll open it up to public comment now. Anyone wishing to speak, would ask you to begin with your name and address. Please leave your comments and direct all questions through me.
David Heatherly, 5269 Lathrop. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll start off saying, served on Traffic Safety Commission for about 25 years now, and it always was a pleasure for me to have someone come in after they've come in and seen us and asked about something and thanked us for what we had got involved in. It didn't always work out successfully, but at times it did, and it felt good to have somebody come in, made you feel like the system's working. I'm here to say thank you for getting involved and getting our bike path blacktopped and treated, so we can get into the winter season and get some length out of that. It just shows that the system works, and I know my little two minutes or whatever I said wasn't what made it happen. I know other folks got involved, but I want to say thank you for your time, Council and Mayor, for doing that. Next piece, you had a resident came here recently. I don't know exactly which meeting it was, and he was complaining about, a resident that was complaining about not having proper signage at his place to have a parking spot in front of his home identified to his address. Well, just to get some feedback to the council, we did see this individual about a year ago, and I don't know if you know, our standard procedure is, when somebody comes to our meeting and brings up an issue, we do a go-and-see. So we'll go out and see what is going on. Myself, I stood in this gentleman's living room, and I explained to him what we had here. We have an issue here in town where many of our, there are a lot of locations that have a sign in front of their house that had designated parking to that address. And we're trying to eliminate all those, because first off, that's a public roadway, okay? For you to identify, that's just to you. That's kind of taken away from all. But how they, how we got here isn't the issue, it's cleaning it up. Many times, we're finding out these identified addresses, locations, the folks have moved and everything's changed. The person that's living there has no idea why it's there. So we've taken some cleanup, and specifically to this gentleman's issue, he had issues because on Fourth, I think he was on Third, and on Fourth Street, there was an address there, a parking spot with an address, and he says this guy only got it because he had a knee surgery. And he had a legitimate argument, so we work, we're working to clean these things up. But we did try to come to a solution, so our president of the commission went to the location, provided this individual with a application for a handicap parking permit, and that was at least giving him some resolution to get what he needed. So I just want the council to know, we, we did visit this issue, and we gave him an opportunity to resolve it, or an avenue anyway. Now, the next piece is, Timber, I can tell you something that was brought up in the Traffic Safety Commission about that intersection. And I can say that I, call it what you want, but I'm a proponent of roundabouts. And I'm going to tell you, I've seen it in Oakland County, I've seen it in Macomb County, and it's all a matter of education and how we use it. A roundabout there would work. The biggest problem you have, there's people turning right that are headed east, and folk, they're not going to turn right. They're going to get around the traffic that's turning left, and the folks turning onto West Road, there's where your accidents occur, okay? A roundabout, that wouldn't be there. Now, I got a laugh. People laughed at the whole idea, and for your knowledge, there's not one in Wayne County. There's one working at Novi, correct or not correct?
Not in Novi, in Northville.
Northville, thank you. I had the N right.
There's several, there's several in the planning stages. There's one in construction.
Okay. So I'm going to tell you, that would work there. It's just we don't, here in Michigan, we're not familiar with it, and folks are uncomfortable getting into them. But once, if you go in other states, they work like a dream, and you don't have a light there anymore. People just move through the location and the traffic flows. But we have to get used to that. Brings me to my last issue. I had a resident at 2611 Toledo come to me, and this is a lifelong, longtime resident of Trenton. He is the last home on Toledo, right at the railroad track, okay? In the summertime, a lot of our Little League baseball and softball games are funneled to Lions Park, okay? That parking lot that Lions Park has, is a defined space, okay? The volume of folks that are coming there to the ballgames is well beyond what that presently, what that parking lot has been utilized for. So what you do is you have the overflow on Julie, and so on Julie's the first roadway due west of that, of that area. And folks are parking on both sides of the road, some parking head on to one another, and there's also mailboxes for all the residents that they can't get to there. Now, this gentleman has issues where people are pulling in his driveway because he's the last house here, and parking in his driveway, because at one point in time, he had a need for a for a wide driveway, and they're parking in his driveway, he's gone as far as to stick driveway markers in front of his house, demarcating his property line. So he came up with an idea, and I think it's a good idea, and I brought it up to the Traffic Safety Commission in our discussion, but we really didn't have an answer for it, but here's the idea. He suggested that that parking lot be paved, and that angled parking be around the perimeter of the lot, a lot itself, and then have parking in the center of the lot now. That presently isn't done, okay, the center of that lot's not utilized. So if, if the parking lot was paved and lines were put in, it would alleviate a lot of the overflow that's going onto the side streets. So that was kind of, we didn't really have an answer how we would go with this, so I took it upon myself tonight to come to you folks and say, hey, we've got an issue, and a long-term resident has come up with a potential solution here, it's just a matter of whether we want to at least try to get some answers there or not. I, I'll also tell you that, if you were to go and see that situation on Julie, you would question whether we could get an emergency fire vehicle down the roadway safely, would have an issues, people coming, just imagine if all the lines, all the moons aligned and you had an emergency situation and the, and the ballfields ended at the same time, all these folks going into their vehicles and all this happening. There's not a lot of room between the vehicles parked on both sides of the road. It may have the defined amount of space, but I don't think it's necessarily safe. So, I'm bringing this to council, and yourself, Mayor, to have some dialogue on this, and see if we just can't come up with a way to give an answer to the issue, and maybe appease the resident that's dealing with his problems, okay? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Heatherly, appreciate frankly everything that you've done with the Traffic Safety Commission, all that, but we'll definitely, in the meantime, make sure that we keep tabs on the enforcement in that area too, for parking and things like that, but yeah, and see what we can do on the parking lot situation.
Appreciate your time.
Of course, thank you very much. Alrighty, we have any other public comment this evening? All right, seeing none, entertain a motion to adjourn at 7:35 p.m. Moved and supported. All right, see you all next week.